The zoning board appeals to order. If we could please call the roll.
Mr. Frere?
Here.
Mr. Dolman?
Here.
Mr. Daley?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Chairman Goodman?
Here. Also, for the record, the deputy town attorney, who usually joins us, is in the building. She's across the hall in the courtroom and may be able to get here later, but she is presenting a case in court this evening. And if we could please call the first case.
Appeal of Joseph...
Oh, no. We have to, if we could have a motion on the minutes of the last meeting.
No, there weren't any.
There weren't any, okay.
We don't have them.
That's why, if we could call the first case then, please.
Appeal of Joseph Lamalfa for variance from Section 220-25B1A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to property at 138 Fieldstone Drive, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district to construct a six-foot fence in the front yard. The property is a corner lot and, as defined, has front yards along Fieldstone Drive in North Allendale Ave. Section 220-25B1A permits the maximum height for fences located in the front and side yards to be four feet. As proposed, a six-foot height, high fence will be located in the front yard on North Allendale Ave. Therefore, a two-foot fence height variance is required. Ten notices were mailed, zero responses.
If the applicant could please come forward and set forth your application. Yes, you both can. If you could both set forth your name and address on the record and the reasons for your application, what efforts you may have taken to mitigate the need for a variance or to minimize the variance that you're requesting.
Joe Lamalfa, 138 Fieldstone Drive, Niskuna.
And I'm Sue Lamalfa, 138 Fieldstone Drive, Niskuna.
Okay.
Hey, talk into the mic a little bit.
Do you want me to say my name again?
No, you're good with the address.
If you could just set forth your application, the reasons for it, what you've done to mitigate the need for a variance.
So, so we just want to, you know, two-foot variance. We want a privacy fence in our backyard, which I understand you consider the front yard, but it's really our backyard for all intents purposes. We're asking for the two-foot variance for privacy, for safety of our, for our son, who's one years old. You know, it's a, it's a vinyl PVC vinyl fence. There's about 15 of them in our neighborhood. And if you were putting up a fence in your backyard, I'm sure one of the reasons you want is privacy. So, you wouldn't put up a four-foot fence, you want to put up a six-foot fence. So, it doesn't bear any, it doesn't block any road signs. We're enough feet distance from, from the road or any intersection. It's...
And we did speak with our neighbors, including those who share our property line, and, and we have their full support as well. Several of our neighbors have the, have the same fence that we...
Are any of the other fences that are six feet along the road frontage?
What do you, what do you mean exactly?
You say that you have neighbors with six-foot fences. Are your, it's considered the front yard because it has road frontage along that sideline. Are any of your neighbors that have six-foot fences, are they along the road frontage?
You mean a corner, like a corner lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, talk into the mic, would you may?
Yes, where the fence is facing the public street.
Yes, yes.
The front of their fence would be facing the street.
As opposed to, as opposed, as opposed to just being on the side yard or the backyard? Anyone else have one, what would be zoned, the front yard?
I don't believe so. A corner lot like ours? No, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you.
And it would be approximately 20 feet in from the street line, is what we proposed, and also a good 75 feet from the corner, the intersection.
When you say from the street line, are you talking about the pavement line?
Correct.
Or the right-of-way?
The actual, where the pavement meets the grass.
And how far is the right-of-way line from the end of the pavement?
I'm not sure what the right-of-way line is.
The area that would be town property.
I think town property is 15 feet in from, from the, from the, where the street meets the grass, I believe.
So then you would be...
That would be our property line.
So then you're talking about five feet from the property line.
Correct. And really, for us, it's a big privacy issue because we have several houses that look right onto our backyard. I would say maybe six, at least. We have a house in our backyard, as well as several on the side on North Allendale that are looking into our backyard. And we don't feel like four feet would give us the privacy that we need.
And are those houses affected by the side that would have to be four feet? Because the area that would be the backyard, the back line, or a sideline, as long as it's in the back rear of the house, can be six foot without a variance. The other houses that you're mentioning, are they looking from the side that's affected by the four-foot fence?
They would look onto that side of the fence.
Okay. Just, just so you, because this is unique. I live on a corner as well, so I'm in the same situation. I have two front yards. You have two front yards.
Aren't you lucky?
As I stand on Fieldstone and look at your house, I'm looking at the front, front door, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And as I look at your house, as I'm standing on Fieldstone, the portion of your backyard to my left, okay? That can be six, six feet, and it originates off the rear corner of your house. That's fine. The fence all the way back here, what I assume is closer near your rear property line and all the way across your rear property line can be six feet. The portion of this fence that is, is technically can't be six feet is the section of the backyard that fronts, it's Allendale, right?
North Allendale.
That section, because that's a front yard, can't be six feet.
Right.
Okay. So, the other section of it's fine. That, that doesn't require a variance.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Please.
The whole back could be six feet?
No. The back, what you have to do is, as you're standing at Allendale now and looking at the side of your house, which is the side of your house that, that the garage side is on, so the side of the house as I'm standing on Allendale, anything from the rear corner of your house...
Out.
Straight back...
Could be six.
Could be six feet.
That's...
Anything that goes out towards Allendale, that section...
Okay. That was my understanding.
It has to be four feet. Okay. Is there a reason that you can, you, and I didn't see that there was any, I mean, it looked like maybe there was a shed back there, but it didn't look like there was a pool back there, there was anything else?
We do have a patio.
Right, understood. And, and I assume that that goes out from what looks like to be maybe a rear...
Correct.
Sunroom or a rear family room or something like that? In the middle of, essentially in the middle of...
Pretty much, yes.
Is there a reason that you couldn't just terminate the fence from the rear corner of your house straight back? In other words, that you can, you can have it six feet...
If we go straight back.
From the rear corner of your house, if you go straight back to the property line.
For us, that's cutting off a lot of our property that we would use. Quite, quite a substantial amount.
Okay.
From, from our perspective.
Well, you could still use it, but it's just not going to be fenced in.
Not fenced in, right.
So, back to my question, is, is it just a matter of you, you, you want to capture the rest of that, looks like 47 feet from the corner of the house out to the, where the fence would terminate?
Essentially, what it looks like your neighbor's done across the street. Looks like, I, I'm looking at Google...
Yeah.
Right now, and it looks like your neighbor across the street shot a fence out from the back corner of their house. Looks like that's across Allendale. That would be, you wouldn't require a variance to do that?
Right.
Okay. But that's not acceptable for what you're trying to do, is that what you're saying?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And also, our lot is such that if you were sitting on our patio, it, there's a slight incline there. So even if we were to put up a six-foot fence shooting straight back, it still wouldn't give us the privacy for the houses that are kind of up, looking down on us, if that makes sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
And the sidewalk that's there, that everyone walks on?
So, I just had one more question...
Yeah.
About the neighborhood, because I, I'm an alternate member, so I didn't get a chance to drive through the neighborhood itself. It looks, from what I'm looking at on the Google, that this is a relatively new neighborhood, all-new development, and there's not a lot of other construction around it. The lots are pretty much bare for the most part. Is that still the case?
No.
No.
No, it's about 10 years old and all the lots are full.
Okay, so this is just an older picture?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
On the Google, on the Google map, yeah.
Well, I mean, this is far as like, there's not a lot of fences built around the neighborhood.
Right.
There's not a lot of trees.
No, I know what you're looking at, yeah, that's an old...
That's an old photo.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
But in terms of, I, I know that you're concerned about privacy, and you would still, at least as you're standing on Fieldstone, looking at your house, you'd have the six-foot fence on the left side of your property, which is, it appears to be the closest house to you as you sit on the corner is the one to the left. Is that right? And there's one behind you.
Correct, and then there's one behind us, correct, yeah.
I understand.
Our biggest concern with the privacy factor is actually the house behind us, because their backyard butts up against our backyard. And then also the houses on the other side of North Allendale, because they're all looking in on us when we're out in our backyard. So that's our privacy, privacy.
I'm just trying to, and, and again, I understand this is an older picture, but it appears those houses sit at least some distance back off the road. Is that right?
I would say maybe average, I don't know, maybe what?
And the house behind you appears to be two stories? Some of the houses appear to be...
They're all two, they're all two-story houses.
Right, but I'm saying it appears at least the side of the house that faces you is, is a, a, a full two-story houses, as opposed to having vaulted or peaked, peaked roofs in that part. It's a full two-story.
Yes.
So even with a six-foot fence, they're still going to look down into your yard?
But not from their backyard.
Okay, but again, you can have the six-foot fence across your backyard up to the point of that rear side of the house.
Yeah, yeah.
One of the things I have to do when I review this is find the least restrictive alternative to a variance. If I can provide you an alternative that doesn't require a variance, that's the best thing. If I can provide you with an alternative that minimizes the amount of a variance, that's, that's good. So I'm trying, that's, that's why my questions may seem a little strange, but that's why I'm asking them the way I'm asking them, is because one of the things I have to do is find the least restrictive alternative to your variance. Okay?
So, I actually also have a corner lot, and I also have a one-year-old, so I completely understand your, your concerns with privacy. What I have on my property is green, a, a green screen, essentially, to provide some privacy. Is there any reason why you couldn't do a four-foot fence for safety reasons and then plant some, some, put some plantings in that would provide extra coverage and give you that privacy you're looking for?
No, there's no reason we couldn't do that. We just didn't want to spend the money and then spend the money.
Okay, all right.
Pretty much, I mean, we prefer to just do the fence and kind of leave it at that, but...
Okay. All right, that's an answer.
The house directly behind you, how does having the six-foot on the side facing Allendale provide privacy, additional privacy than you could have? Because you could have a six-foot directly behind you that would provide that privacy from then, them, and then scale it down to a four-foot where the statute would require a four-foot?
Sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I can look over a four-foot fence, it's just not...
There's a sidewalk there, there's, I mean, it's just, I mean, it's...
But you had mentioned the house behind you. That's, that's one of the reasons.
No, oh, no, I was thinking that, the, the four-foot, but no, he corrected me. It would be, we would be able to have the six-foot fence back there.
Yeah, okay.
Well, to a certain point. And then it would have to drop down even in the back.
So, just so I'm clear, the houses that sit across Allendale are now going to look at your six-foot fence? In, as they look out their front of their houses, out of their front yards, they'll see a six-foot fence?
Correct.
And you've talked to those folks?
Yes.
They don't care?
No. A few of them actually offered to come here, but we told them they didn't have to.
Any other questions from the board? Anything you wish to add?
I think that's pretty much it.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against the application? Hearing none. I do have to advise, I should have meant to do it earlier, but I always do it at this point as well, that we have only five members here today. A vote to grant the variance does require a vote of four people out of seven. If we only have five people, it still requires a vote of four, so you have to get four out of five as opposed to four out of seven. You do have the option to adjourn this till there's a full board, so you would only need four out of seven votes. So it's your choice whether, wish, whether you wish us to go forward with only five members here, or if you wish to have a full board.
Go forward. I mean, I guess my only other question would be...
You won't have to re, you won't have to refile.
You don't have to refile.
Pay again. As we sit here and talk about casinos and things, the odds of, as, as the chairman said, you have to have, you have to have four of the five of us for your variance to be granted, as opposed to four of the seven in a full board. You don't have to refile, you would just be moved to the next meeting. That, that, some people feel that that's a better, a, a better alternative. We apologize that it's not a full board when you came, but...
Don't go forward with it. Okay, we'll go forward with it.
You, so you want to go forward this evening? Okay. And I, the record should reflect that the deputy town attorney has arrived. Okay.
Were there any letters sent in from the neighbors? No letters?
No letters.
Okay.
Does anyone wish to make a motion?
Can I just ask one other, I'm sorry, and I apologize. And I, I'm sure you said this, or it might be, is, what kind of fence is this going to be?
It's a white vinyl PVC privacy fence.
Thank you.
Sure.
So it's a solid fence?
Correct.
The neighbors across the street. Is it pretty much the same as the, the one across the street?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone wish to make a motion? Hearing none, I will make a motion that the variance not be granted. This board very rarely grants six-foot fence variances on areas that border streets. The plan of the town is to not have what can look like a larger wall facing the streets. In extenuating circumstances, we do, this is, the situation we have here is no different than many that we have come before us. The applicant has stated that they could use a four-foot fence for safety, as well as planting greenery for the extra privacy, which is what many people do. So I believe that the zoning, that the variance request is a substantial request from the standpoint that it is, seeks to raise the level of the fence 50% over the amount that would otherwise be allowed by the, by the ordinance, as well as there are other methods that can be used to obtain the same result. Motion is made, is there a second?
I'm going to second the motion. As I indicated, I, I sympathize with your situation, because I am in a corner lot, and a lot of things that I could do, I am restricted from doing. The problem that I have is, is that because this is a, a fairly open landscape here, you are not restricted because of a pool that would restrict your ability to put in a, a six-foot fence from the rear corner of your house, not needing a variance, many of the impediments that we, we occasionally look to, to make exceptions are not present. You could have a full six-foot fence for two-thirds, it appears, of your rear property line, which appears as well to encompass the house that sits behind you. Your backyard, it appears from the plan that you've given us, there's about a 47-foot space, almost a 47-foot square area, which is the area that requires the variance, that could have a four-foot fence, it could have the use of a four-foot fence with arborvitae or other type of greenery, which would provide the privacy that you're looking for. I do not think this is the least restrictive alternative. This board is typically very harsh on six-foot fences in front yards when there are alternatives. And I think that's consistent with this particular case, since there's no mitigating factors that prevent you from still achieving what you're looking to achieve without the need for a variance or reducing the amount of the variance. So for those reasons and the reasons already stated, I'm going to second the motion.
The motion has been made and seconded, is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, if the court could call the roll.
Mr. Frere?
Yes.
Mr. Dolman?
I'm going to vote no, meaning to, I'm going to vote to approve. As the other members of the board have stated, this is something that the board very rarely grants. However, I do think that it's my responsibility to evaluate each application on its merits. So I do agree that there is other means necessary to you, but however that is, it a substantial cost to the family, and I think that is a mitigating factor, though not determinative on its own. I don't believe that, based on the fact that I see fences in the neighborhood that are similar, that it's undesirable change to the neighborhood. It is very clearly a substantial request. There's no environmental impacts or, or physical adverse effects that would be created by this. And this is self-created, by self-created, meaning I understand in your application that you said, hey, they never told us, you know, we didn't create the zoning laws or our weird lot, but what you're trying to do is something of your own creation. So this is self-created, though that on its own is not determinative. This was very close for me, but on the balance, I would vote to approve, so no on the motion to disapprove.
Mr. Daley?
I vote yes.
Mr. Green?
I'm voting in favor of the motion to not grant the variance. I, I am sympathetic. I mean, I, I don't know, you may have seen me parked, I, I spent a lot of time, you know, looking not only at your particular circumstance, but I walked the neighborhood. I even looked again and walked a little more, so I, I am sympathetic, but the, the fact is that it appear that you would be able to achieve a goodly portion of the benefit that you're seeking with something less than, than the six-foot fence. And while I'm appreciative that no neighbor has spoke against, and the neighbors that you say you've spoken to are not opposed, and I have no reason to doubt your word, the fact is, when the variance is granted, it, it's, it's forever. So the people who are across the street on North Allendale, the current ones, even though they may have said they don't care, my thought is, others might, because they, as attractive as perhaps a, a fence you have proposed could be, it's still pretty stark. So for those reasons and the reasons stated, I, I'm voting no on the motion. I'm voting yes on the motion to not grant the variance.
Chairman Goodman?
For the reasons stated, I will also vote yes on the motion. We have a duty to look at the circumstances, but we also have a duty, the statute provides us guidelines that we are required to follow to, when we make a decision, and based on the statutory guidelines, do not believe, as sympathetic as I may be, to the applicant that they met the requirements for us to be able to grant the use variance. I do want to thank you for your time this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if we could call the next case, please?
Appeal by Louis Morocco for a variance from Section 220-18B2 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, as it applies to property at 1056 Van Antwerp Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district to construct a six, to construct a fence, which is the fourth accessory structure. Section 220-18B2 states that there shall be, not be more than three accessory structures on a lot. There are currently three accessory structures on the property, two sheds and a carport. Any existing fencing on the property never received a permit from this office. As proposed, the new fence and any existing fencing represent a fourth accessory structure. Therefore, a variance from, for one additional accessory structure is required. Eighteen notices were mailed out, zero responses.
Sir, you could just state your name and address?
Louis Morocco, 1056 Van Antwerp.
I may, yeah, just get the option up front.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You may have heard with the prior applicant, we only have five members here this evening.
Yeah, yeah.
And you need to have four votes out of five as opposed to four out of seven, so if you wish an adjournment to come another night, you can be granted that.
No, it's fine.
Okay. If you could just state what your application is?
Yeah.
Anything you did to mitigate the need for a variance and why you feel you can't mitigate the need?
I, I have pictures, I don't know how this works, so I'm, I'm new to this. Trying to put a 160-foot white vinyl, six-foot privacy, privacy fence on the left side of the property. The property itself, we acquired it in October of 2017. Everything else is fenced in to some degree, whether it be mine or somebody else's. The request is for, to separate the yards between me and my neighbor. They have a pool that rides right up against, and I don't know if you were able to see it, if you wanted to look at pictures I took?
Sure, yeah. If we can keep the pictures as part of the record?
Oh, yeah, I got them.
Okay.
So, so it's a really straightforward request. All, I haven't installed any additional structures since acquiring the property. It was, I don't think it was ever surveyed prior to me acquiring it. You know, it's a, it's a straightforward request. We started to clear some trees on the back end to make it straight down, but the way the property line actually extends out in the back, I think we're going to end up cutting a little bit further. There's a valley that goes there. So the request is for, first need would be for privacy, to separate the yards and, and give us a little bit of, you know, privacy from them using their pool, sunbathing and that aspect, and ultimately some security. We have a seven-year-old, and eventually the plan is to get a dog to have that size property and not be able to have a dog running freely, kind of, kind of one of the reasons why we brought the property. I didn't do anything to mitigate it because of, it was an existing fence at one time, and the neighbor took it down. It was a wire fence. I spoke with them, Bill and Kim next door, they, they were fine with it, but I did want to follow the right rules and get the, the permit and make sure, you know, everything's...
Was that their fence that had been there before?
I don't think so. I think it was ours. My understanding, it was just a, a simple wire. There's actually one pole still left on the, where the tree is, you can still see it, but they, they mentioned...
Just a chain link fence?
Yeah, like one of those, almost like chicken wire style, not very high, but there was one there at one time.
And you have two sheds on the property?
Yeah, so there's a, a one-car garage at the end of the driveway, and then there's a storage shed for lawn, and then there is a separate carport. The property itself is, I think I'm at .70 of an acre, a little less than three-quarters of an acre there.
So you're a much larger lot than what otherwise...
Yeah.
...you're in an R2?
I don't... So it would go straight down that valley, right underneath the tree, straight into the back. We started to clear some trees, but when we got the survey, there's actually, because of the way the, the property line actually goes, it actually cuts past the valley and goes... of the way the property line actually goes, it actually cuts past the valley and goes a sharp angle, so I have to take down some additional trees and do a little bit of clearing to further, just, just to, once the fences, if the fence is installed, that we wouldn't have to take it down again to take those trees down from a liability issue.
Laura, am I correct that our issue here is a number of accessory structures, not where he's putting the fence?
That's right.
Or we don't have a setback issue, we don't have a six-foot issue? It's purely number of accessory structures?
And you said you have a child?
Yeah, seven-year-old.
Can I, can I just ask?
Yeah.
So it appears that, the arguments that we had for the last fence is you don't apply to you?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So what we're looking at is you've got what are considered three accessory structures. You've got two sheds and a carport on your property, is that right?
Yeah, and technically, if we're basing a fence by a structure, we do have multiple other fencing within the property. Again, I didn't install it, we acquired it that way, that was kind of, you know.
And you basically inherit what you get?
Yeah, yeah.
But what I'm saying is if you're gonna add to that, that's when the issue of accessory structures come in. So just so I'm clear, the, the, the two sheds, you use both the sheds, I assume?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
There's, there's no way, no way you could combine them and have one shed?
No, yeah, yeah.
I'm just throwing things out there only because, you know, again.
The only way to do that would be take down both structures and end up doing a much significant, because what end, the way it's, it's aligned, you got the, the, what you call it, going this way, the shed for the tools and stuff like that goes out that way, and the one-car garage has electric, has a wood-burning stove, you know, to do one, you know.
The, the properties in Van Antwerp are pretty unique, size-wise, configuration on Van Antwerp road. And I assume that's not any different in your property, correct? Usually they're kind of narrow and long and?
Yeah, it's a weird, like it.
And not, and not a consistent configuration?
No, it was actually kind of, what we asked when the survey was done, is actually to plot out that side, to be very specific about it, because we were, the plan of it, and actually, if you see the front, jolts way forward, and then it comes in, goes down, and then towards the back, it jolts way out. So, I mean, ideally, I wouldn't want it that way, but.
The other thing you would run into is, if you needed a bigger, if you tried to combine your sheds, it's possible you'd run into a setback issue. In other words, if you're putting a larger structure there, you have to be a certain distance from the side yard and rear.
Yeah.
So really, you don't have an option to get rid of or change the number of, is really my point.
Yeah.
The accessory structures, you have the carport, obviously, you use for your?
Oh, yeah, damn, yeah, yeah.
You have two sheds that you use, correct?
Yeah, one, the, the garage is storage and bikes and stuff like that, and then the other one's for the lawn equipment, because you gotta have a rider and.
You may have said this, and I apologize, what type of fence are you putting up?
A white vinyl. I figure six-foot vinyl, it's, you know, we're gonna do it, gonna do it right, so.
And your, your neighbors, because these properties all are, you know, pretty, pretty close quarters, they're aware of this?
I, I mentioned that we were gonna do a fence, not exactly what we're gonna do, because originally, the thought was to do the spruce, but then through conversations, within a year, spruce doesn't look so good anymore, so if you're gonna spend $4,000, miles up in five-something to put up a white vinyl and not have any, you know, maintenance on it.
And is it just the one run on the one side?
Yep.
How is that gonna match up with, I, I mean, it looks like, from, from my look of your house, you have sort of a, it's a, it's a, is it a cedar shingle kind of house?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
That, so in other words, is the white vinyl fence gonna fit into the?
Um, it's not, there's no, yeah, there's not, no consistency within the whole, because the one neighbor has spruce, one of the neighbors in the back put up a new fence that's not treated, so it's inconsistent.
Well, it's not like everybody else has a nice, you know, spruce fence, and you're gonna put a white vinyl fence in.
No, but the only, the reason we did it, another thought was, if you look, I don't know if you saw the pictures, the neighbor has a four-foot, so we'd match that white right along, so we'd go right on the inside and?
Has a picket?
Yeah, the picket, yeah. Keep it consistent color.
Or it's gonna follow that same line for the most part?
For the most part.
I saw the stakes in the ground.
Yeah, and that was to understand where the property line is.
Okay.
The, I saw the photographs, the pool in your next-door neighbor is an unfenced pool. It's an above-ground pool, but it's unfenced.
Yeah.
Are you also looking for safety?
Yeah.
For your son to not be wandering near the pool?
I mean, we don't let him go out there. My wife wanted to, me to express that, but I'm honest, I mean, we're, we spend time, we're, we don't, we're okay with it, but it is a concern, I mean.
So your wife would like the safety?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Laura, can I ask you, is there any safety or environmental concern to this, or is there, is this, for the most part, just a question of aesthetics and maintaining the character of the neighborhood?
Yeah, it's not a safety, because if you have a retractable ladder on above-ground pool, it doesn't need to be fenced, but.
I, I mean, the, the, the matter at hand here, there's no safety concern to the matter at hand?
Not, not from the town's standpoint.
Okay, all right, thank you.
May I inquire, were the surveyors, I say the word spike, they weren't really spikes, they were wooden?
Well.
Expert, just let me ask a question. Did the surveyor survey the line to the back end of your property?
Yeah, and actually, I have additional photos, and we're having a little bit of concern in the backside of it, some debris.
So if you look here, the back corner, we have, they're actually spiked, all, all the locations are spiked, but for illustration purposes, we had them also put in those lines, specifically on that, on that side, in the four corners. Because actually, if you look on the front left side, the spike actually goes in between a tree, you know, it's, it's weird how everything lays out, but they are spiked, even those pins are all spiked.
So if I may, the property line has been marked out by a surveyor with the wooden spikes. You know where the property line is?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. There's metal and wooden, yep.
Have you talked to Mr. Vasari about this?
I told him we were gonna put up a fence, he said, just keep it within the thing. We didn't talk to him about the size of it or anything like that, because we were, at the time, we didn't.
You didn't, you didn't?
Tell him it was a six-foot white?
You didn't say six foot or four foot?
No.
You just said a fence?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna put up a fence.
He doesn't know what kind of a fence?
No, no. Because at the time, we didn't really know how much fencing was. It was a thought, and then, to be honest with you, getting the survey was the first step, and then going for the permit and getting pricing. You know, because initially, we thought, again, go with the spruce, but, you know, worked out better.
May I inquire, if there was not a carport or one less shed, this gentleman would not have to be here?
That is correct.
In front of the zoning board of appeals.
Correct.
Got it.
Yep. Purely a number of accessory structures.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions?
Actually, how close is your fence gonna be to his property line, Mr. Vasari's property line?
It'll probably be within, that's complicated, because we're kind of right down, in the initial, if you look at, I don't know who has the pictures.
Benny, turn your mic around.
So it would follow the initial, sorry, the initial would follow within the line, so that's the stake there, and then as the property line, and I don't know if you can see it here, as it goes down, we would still follow a, pretty much a straight line, but if you can see here, that's the property line, and then it actually jolts out even further, which I didn't get a great picture of, of the backside of the property. But if you have the survey map, you can actually see how much it jolts out instead of following, because the, the valley itself kind of stays straight, and the property kind of jolts out. So initially, it'd be within half a foot, but, but extending out, because it's gonna follow that, that trail.
It's a half a foot from his property line?
Probably right here, yeah, six, six inches, maybe, and then it would slowly and gradually go out because of the property, the way that dynamics are.
Did any letters come in from Mr. Vasari?
We have, the other neighbor was here.
Okay, if you could just come up and give your name and address?
My name is Suzanne Doyle, I live at 1052 Van Antwerp Road, right next to the Moroccos.
What was I'm facing is how she lived?
On the corner, on the corner lot.
Right or left?
To the right, to the right. The back of our house is up against their driveway to their carport. Our house faces Ray Street, but it's, the address is Van Antwerp Road, it's been there since 1901. And we have a fence all around, and we've been there almost 30 years. There's always been a fence along the other side of their driveway, and also on the other side of their property. So I just wanted to come and say, it makes sense to me that the fence would continue out the other side of the property line, and also to say that those two structures, sheds, are pretty much one, there's, I don't, can you walk between?
Yeah, there's a small.
You could, but it's very small. Mr. Gill, I don't know if any of you know him, but he was quite the craftsman, and so that little part of the shed is very close, it looks like one big thing.
So would it be, so would it be fair to say as a neighbor who understands the aesthetics of the neighborhood that you support this application?
Yes, I would.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have anything else, sir?
No.
Any other questions from the board? Anyone in the audience wishes to be heard for or against the application? Anyone wish to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna move that we approve the variance as requested. Unlike other fence cases that we have, the issue in this is not whether a six-foot fence, it's not a setback issue, it's purely a accessory structure issue. I think, as we've heard from the neighbor, this fence will be consistent, at least, with what was in place and consistent with what is in place through a majority of the neighborhood in this particular area. I don't see any alternative to providing the applicant what he's looking for, which is some security, and the problem is, is that, given the unique nature of these lots and the configuration of the lots, where they're located in proximity to the neighbors, I don't see any other alternative that he could turn to, to achieve the same purpose. It's not gonna have an environmental effect, it's not gonna affect the character of the neighborhood. While it is substantial, given the size of the fence and self-created, I don't find that determinative in terms of the variance that's requested. So for those reasons, I move that we approve the variance.
There's been a motion made, is there a second?
I'd like to second the motion.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'd ask if the clerk could call the roll, please?
Yes.
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Yes, for the reasons stated, sir, the variance is granted, I appreciate your coming and taking the time.
Thank you.
If we could call the next case, please?
The appeal of Steve Chexfield for a variance from Section 220-18B3B and Section 220-13 Schedule IB of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to a property at 628 Pierce Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district, to construct a 21-foot diameter above-ground pool partially within a designated side yard setback. Section 220-18B3B states that the required side yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building, as defined major accessory structures or detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet. The pool at 346 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IB establishes the minimum required side setback at 20 feet. As proposed, the pool will be located eight feet from the side property line, therefore a 12-foot side yard setback variance is required. Nine notices were sent out, zero responses. And Fred, you have a note from?
You, you have that note?
I have it. The applicant wrote, I am sorry, I'm not able to attend tonight's variance zoning board meeting due to my job as a New York State Corrections Officer, being in need of extra officers for safety and concern of other officers. I was really hoping to be there in person to express my thoughts and concerns on this, my variance. I may have several copies of my plot plan to show the reasons why I have expressed in detail the reasons for the variance. I'm confident I have given extent, detail, and diagrams of my plans. Please take careful consideration of your decision. Thank you for your time, and again, I apologize for my absence, I look forward to your decision.
As with the other applicants, this applicant would be entitled to have a hearing by seven members. He is not here today to consent to a lower number of board members. Based on that, it would be my recommendation to adjourn the matter.
Do we, do we have any idea if his absence is unique to tonight, or is just?
Yeah.
So, in other words, he had a special circumstance tonight as a corrections officer that he could not attend?
Yes, he got called in.
Then I would, I would agree, especially given that and the fact that we are shorthanded here tonight, so.
Based on those factors, I would make a motion to adjourn the matter?
Make a motion.
Second, are you seconding, Mr. Daley?
I made the motion. I made the motion, is there a second?
Second the motion.
Motion is made and seconded, discussion, hearing none, if we could call the, I would just ask for a voice vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Vote is unanimous to adjourn. We could call the next matter, please?
Appeal of Stephen Conway for a variance from Section 220-18B3B and Section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to property at 1360 Valencia Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district, to construct an 18-by-40-foot in-ground pool partially within a designated side yard setback. Section 220-18B3B states that the required side yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building, as defined major accessory structures or detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet. The pool at 720 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IC establishes the minimum required side setback as 15 feet. As proposed, the pool will be located 11 feet from the side property line, therefore a four-foot side yard setback variance is required. Fifteen notices were mailed out, zero responses.
If the applicant could please come forward, set forth your name and address, and sir, I have to advise you, and we only have five members here tonight, it is a seven-member board, you're required to have four votes to maintain, to have a variance granted, and you have the right to do that with seven people as opposed to five people.
Okay, let me start with, I'm not Mr. Conway, I am here representing Mr. Conway tonight, he couldn't, he really much, very much apologized for not being able to attend tonight's meeting, he is out of town on special circumstances, but I, I agreed to, I'm a longtime friend of his, and I agreed, I went over, reviewed the property, and I am pretty familiar with what he would be here saying tonight, so.
Do you have the authority to make that waiver for him?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So then the question is, do you wish to go forward with a five-member board, or would you? So then the question is, do you wish to go forward with a five-member board, or would you wanna have a seven-member board?
I think we'd like to go forward with the five-member board. Did you need my name and...
Yes, if you could give your name and address for the record.
My name is Robert St. John, 1014 Country Brook Court, Schenectady, New York, 12306.
If you could just set forth on the record, the, what the application is, the reasons for the application, and what measures have been taken, or what measures were considered to mitigate the need for a variance?
Okay. Mr. Conway's backyard has a electrical line coming from the backyard to the house. And that's, that's the, that's the reason why we had to, he had to move the pool. There's a 10-foot drop from the electrical line, you can't have an electrical line within 10-foot of the pool, that's the regulation. He had, uh, your approved electrical inspector, you know, who went out and took a look at it, uh, Janet Savaka, I believe that's, uh, the electrical inspector. Anyway, that's what he gave me, that, uh, it's a 10-foot setback from any electrical wire to a, to a pool. So it kind of, uh, if you wanted to put the pool in and, and respect that, obviously you have to, it's a safety factor to respect the 10-foot setback. He had to move the pool four foot towards the left side of the property in the backyard, and that would change the 15-foot setback from 15 to, uh, 11, so he's asking for a four-foot variance from, uh, that, that thing.
And is, is this movement of, so if I understand this correctly, um, and, and I, I want to do so.
Sure.
Um, he would not have needed a variance if there was, there, he wanted to put the pool in the middle of the yard.
Correct.
But he can't because there's a safety issue, specifically because you can't have electrical wires near pools.
Correct.
Alright, that seems reasonable to me. Is he moving the pool the minimum amount required in order to comply with safety?
He's moving it to the required 10-foot to the, to the, to the left side of his property, which then kinda squeezes the 15-foot property for the pool to be put into 11, it only allows 11-foot from the left side of the pool to the, uh, to the neighbor's property. I do have the neighbor's name here, it, it was Rick Forsaw, who would be the affected neighbor, as far as the pool movement, no problem with that. So, and that 10-foot is, uh, you know, very well respected, I was a safety person for Price Jopper for a number of years, we take it very seriously.
Okay, thank you very much.
I, I understand the safety and that you have to comply with that code.
Sure.
We're required as a board to look at the minimum amount that, minimum variance that could be granted to achieve the result. The electric wire runs at an angle, so as you move this, if you were to move the pool further back, you could move it over at the same time, because the electric wire is not running parallel to the edge of the pool. It, when you get to the middle of the pool, it's 21 feet from the electric wire. So the question has to be, that we have to consider, is there a reason that the pool can't be moved backwards towards the filtration system to minimize, so that it could be moved over to minimize the variance?
Are you saying as, as that, uh, electrical wire that comes in, as it approaches the, uh...
As it approaches the house, it's getting closer towards the pool.
And that's, that's where the 10...
And that's where the 10-foot is, so if the pool were set further back, it could be further over and still stay 10 feet from the wire. So the issue is, is there a reason why the pool is set in terms of the depth? And when I'm saying depth, I'm not saying how deep the water is, the depth into the backyard, that, how, how that amount was chosen?
I'm assuming they're trying to keep the pool close as possible to the patio and the house?
I believe that would be a correct assumption, yes, sir.
And the, obviously, the further you move the pool towards the filtration system in the backyard, the further away from the house you get, and essentially, you gotta run through your backyard for a while to get to your pool.
Correct.
Let me, uh, say something here about pools. You got a pole that you have, that the power company has wires running through the backyard, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that goes to one house, to another house, to another house. Approximately, how far is that pole or the wires, I'm concerned about the wire, to the house? About how far, ballpark figure?
The pole in the back from, from the actual house, not the wires, you're talking about the pole itself?
Alright, we'll do it this way, from the lateral to the pole, how far is that? In other words, from the side of the house to the pole, how far, how far are those wires? About?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was just pointing at, the diagram says it's 116 feet. It's a, it's created a, a triangle, so the wire itself would be a little bit longer, but from the depth of the back of the house, it looks like would be 116 feet 5 inches.
Alright, well, what I'm saying here, the reason why the owner, the applicant wants the pool moved is so if the wires did snap, for whatever reason, that it, hopefully, it wouldn't land in the pool, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that's reasonable, because they do snap, trust me.
Guess I could be crazy to argue when you're there, yes, sir.
So, no matter where you put the pool, you'd really have the same problem.
Okay.
If you move the pool back, and they snapped, possibility they could go in the pool. You move it forward, there's a possibility the wires could snap. So I think you're in a catch-22 here.
Are you, are you, I guess, let me just understand what you're trying to say, is like, no yard that has wires from a backyard to a house should be able to have a pool?
The only concern I got is, no matter what you do with this pool, if those wires snap, for, for whatever reason, there's a possibility, no matter where you put the pool, the wires could land in the pool.
You're saying, I guess, that they, I would think that they would fall straight down, that's what the 10-foot, uh, electrical setback is all about?
Well, it all depends how, how, how they come down.
Unfortunately, I don't think, as long as you're complying with the code...
True.
There's nothing you can do.
Right.
As long as you're in compliance with the code.
Yeah, and the code is the 10 feet, so, and therefore, it's, somebody had an, for an engineering standpoint, determined that that would in most cases be safe.
Okay, that come out of the NECA National Electric Code?
Yep, okay.
Okay.
May I, sir, may I forgive me, I, I need to ask, it's my only chance. How did you come to be drafted to stand in for...
Mr. Conway?
Yes, sir.
I was a very longtime, uh, personal friend of Mr. Conway, and, uh...
You're not a family member, but a personal...
No, sir, not at all, no, we golf together, but, uh, that's, that's, that's the reason, and we've been probably, uh, at least 40 or plus years of, uh, personal friendships.
Yes, this reminds me of the commercial where someone's asking the other person if they could line up a contractor, and if they could then do the next step, and then do the next step, are you familiar?
I, I don't like that commercial, but, yeah, I wanna yell at the person that's doing that, but...
Can I, can I ask of the town attorney, uh, does this gentleman have standing to make this case? And the reason I ask, um, is if we make a decision, um, and the, 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 there may or may not be further appeal, uh, could that become an issue for the town?
I'd advise that if there is a consideration of denial of this variance, that you try to contact the applicant and get a specific, uh, permit, because I'm assuming he gave you a general grant of authority to speak on his behalf, did he specifically contemplate saying if they only have a panel of five?
He did, he did contact me this morning, and he told me that there was a panel of five, as I'm, I'm well, well aware that there was normally seven.
He was aware there was an option for you?
Correct, yes, he was.
I would just be very detailed in the record, um, because I do think it would present an issue, but it wouldn't implicate the town.
So, uh, a separate issue, does this gentleman have standing to waive that particular concern regarding, regarding the seven and five?
Just, just so everybody is clear, we have frequently had proxies who have presented cases for other people, real estate agents, builders, contractors, this isn't a unique situation. And the applicant doesn't even have to appear, period, to still get his variance approved. So, it, it's, it's an issue that I think on the representation of, of this gentleman, that he has the authority, he's appearing, I think that's sufficient.
Absolutely, my only concern is for the rights of the applicant, and making sure that his rights are, are protected, and if the attorney and everyone's saying that's the case, then I'm satisfied. I just wanted to ensure everyone's rights were protected.
In the event that you are misrepresenting your scope of authority, it would be a private issue, but it would not set for, it wouldn't prevent or bar an appeal.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Anything you wish to add?
Uh, only the fact that, uh, Mr. Conway, if he was at all possible, would have been here himself. He's a very responsible and reliable person, and that's the only reason I'm doing this for him, is because, uh, you really felt bad that he could not attend this meeting.
Is there anyone in the room who wishes to be heard for or against the application? Seeing none, I would ask if anyone wishes to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the variances requested. This is actually not a, for, for once, not a self-created issue. Uh, the applicant certainly, this isn't his power line, uh, it's, it's placed by the power company. He has to comply with the code. Um, given the, the size of the, the pool and the, the configuration of the backyard, um, I, I think there is probably, while I don't disagree with Mr. Chairman, that you could probably maneuver the pool in such a way, going backwards or making it smaller that it would fit. I don't know that you could achieve the same benefit that the applicant is looking for. Uh, I don't find it to be substantial, I believe it's four feet, um, is the variance as requested. We have no, uh, anything from the neighbors that express a concern with that, uh, variance being granted. Uh, I don't think there's gonna be an adverse impact, it's an in-ground pool, as opposed to a above-ground pool, it's not gonna affect the neighborhood, and I don't think there's gonna be an environmental effect, and certainly, I think, uh, safety is a paramount concern, especially when you're talking about water and an electrical line. He has to comply with the code, so for those reasons, I would move that we grant the variance.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second that for the same reasons stated.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if the clerk could call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
Yes.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Daley?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes, for the reasons stated, sir, the variance is granted, I wanna thank you for taking the time this evening.
I wanna thank you, gentlemen, you, you're doing quite a job, I really like the way you, uh, present yourself, and I totally appreciate your time.
Your friend owes you a beer.
He does, maybe two, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the board this evening?
You need anything, sir?
Are we, are we, I know, I've, I've missed the mandatory training, I assume there's still another opportunity?
We received it from your work.
I, I, as a matter of fact, I, I have been assigned to take it with my work.
If you provide me, if you can provide a form that would allow you to do one or the other?
Okay, but is there another oppo...
No, I believe the, the only opportunity left at this town is now online. I thought they were gonna do a morning one, but...
Yeah, I thought you had said that there was another one, but...
Yeah.
Okay.
I will double-check, but I, I believe that they sent me, um, for the members that weren't able to attend, like, an online thing for them, so I'll double-check for you.
That's alright, I, I, if, I can, I'll, I'll get a certification through work and send it in.
Any other business? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion is made.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried, we're adjourned.